Hello, everybody, and welcome to the Middleborough Public Schools School Committee Meeting. Happy April 1st to everybody. We're going to get right into it as what we have done in the past. If people have public comments, they can put it in the comment section and we will we'll make sure that they're recognized. And if people have questions as the night goes on, you're more than welcome to put them in the comment section and we will we will definitely try to answer them. The only thing I would remind people is sometimes comments and questions move up pretty quickly. So if your question wasn't was passed over just because we didn't see it, make sure you add it again. We'll be more than happy to make sure we address it. If we can, if not, we will tell you when it will be addressed. So with that, I will turn it over to a our student rep Natalia Natalia, welcome.
Thank you. This update for this week is pretty short, but for the math, staff and administration are all very excited about having most of the students in the building for full time learning. Staff are in today and tomorrow getting things all set up and prepared for Monday. While this is a pretty daunting task, they're looking forward to having all the students in front of them. For HBB, HBB is doing a shoe drive fundraiser and collecting gently used shoes. They have a drop off box in the HBB main lobby. All the shoes are donated to third world, third world countries, and they're hoping to collect 2,500 pairs of shoes. For NMS, NMS faculty and staff are ready for the full return on April 5th. They are excited to see the majority of their students in person. They just ask that families and students be patient with the new transition and be aware that buses might be running a bit late for the first week or so. Team NMS, which is their custodial team, best of luck as they transition to the new high school and NMS welcomes the the high school custodians to NMS. NMS PTA is encouraging everyone to sign up for the May virtual 5K. Anyone interested can sign up through the NMS district website. The next student council meeting is coming up on Tuesday, April 6th at 3:30 PM. This meeting will be virtual. Then finally, for MHS, for all members of the class of 2022 who had registered to take the in-school SAT session, the testing will occur on Tuesday, April 13th. For all seniors, the state deadline for the FASFA, for your FASFA applications are due May 1st. Then lastly, there's still a tutoring opportunity. The MHS National Honor Society is offering tutors to anyone in need of extra help in any subject. You can fill out the rule form that can be found on Brannigan's bulletin or reach out to Amy Petty or Mrs. Levy for any questions.
Thank you Natalia Natalia. How are you doing getting prepared for school being back to normal?
We're excited. I'm I'd rather be phone. Well, I don't know if that will happen for the high school, but I would love to be phone person and I'm excited to go to the new school. We're planning stuff through student council, so we're trying to get everyone excited.
That's awesome. Well, and thank you for all you do. Does anyone have any questions, Natalia? No, tonight you got it off easy Natalia, and thank you. We appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
Thanks Natalia.
Does any member of the committee have anything that they wish to report on? Mr. Rowe.
And up quickly. I guess this is where I get to say thank you to Middleboro for electing me to the school board for the past three years. I was happily appointed in 2017, right about this time, which now seems forever ago when Middleboro won the Super Bowl. And ever since then, we've done really good things for this town. I ran on security and safety. And I feel we've kept our students safe throughout this pandemic. I know we also added extra police to patrol and things like that after Parkland. As well, we've done a lot of things to not only maintain the curriculum, but also improve it with Project Lead the Way and everything else. I'd like to thank a few people, like the one greatest source as a school committee member to find out what's going out there off these meetings happen to be people that run the Facebook groups. Such as, I'm going to miss somebody here, so I apologize. Ms. Thomas and Ms. Cochran, Ms. Lynn, Ms. Tulish, Ms. Humans, Ms. Crowley, Ms. Farini, Ms. Babin, Ms. Joyce. There's a lot of people in there run but Ms. Pierce McKee, you know, and people are in different places and and different boards and they keep all the information out there for the parents. And as a school committee member with a with a daughter at the MKG, it's awesome to hear about the other schools that I'm not getting direct communication from. I'd also like to thank the person who helped me get here, Paul McManus, who helped run my campaign three years ago. And he's been a fantastic friend and and neighbor and I'm happy for him. I'm also thankful for the administration and my fellow school committee members. I've always been there to answer questions, whether I'm calling the administration and filling me in on things or school committee members to find out what is going on or what their thoughts are on things one on one. You've all been absolutely fantastic. Brian from before was great at guiding me. Rich Oakley, your questions, what you do with the sport is absolutely fantastic. You really shine a light on the transparency of it all. Teresa, you're an amazing, amazing energetic person who just gets out that the amount of energy you put into your Facebook page to keep everyone informed is insane. I don't know how you do that. It's awesome. And you're so valuable to this committee. Meg, your insights to, you know, you being a fellow educator like Teresa and I, your insights are fantastic, especially with the special ed population. Greg Stevens has become a good friend and his views are very much helping me as he has students who have gone through the entire school system already. But mostly, thank you, Mr. Young, for being a chair of this committee for the past four years. If I feel like we've had enough meetings because of this COVID crisis to have another two years under my belt than what really happened. But you have done a fantastic job leading us and answering any questions I have and helping guide me to make sure I make the make the proper decision when it comes to legal motions and things like that. And while I don't always agree 100% with everything that does in this committee, no one on this committee agrees with anyone 100%. We are a collection of Middleboro residents that represent all of Middleboro. I'm very proud to have been part of it. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg. Teresa, go right ahead.
Well, I've only had the pleasure of serving with you this past year, Greg, but thank you for your kind words first. I do appreciate that, but truly it takes a team, a huge team here. And we're all very, very happy to be doing this together and you will certainly be very missed. I really wish I had more time with you, but thank you for all that you have given to this town. And I know you're not going anywhere. You'll just be a voice in a different way, and that's fantastic as well. So thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Mr. Oakley.
Sure. Yeah, thank you so much, Greg, and thanks for the kind words as well. And but thank you for putting so much of your life into this. And I'm I'm happy that, from what I understand, the next step for you is is also just more, you know, service in the name of the public good and it's I'm really excited to watch the project that you have going on with the leadership and women's leadership in soccer. And I think that sounds like a really amazing program that you're going to put on. But I just wanted to say thank you to Greg as as kind of a, you know, started off as as just a colleague, but I hope you don't mind me saying, Greg, but I think more like a friend now and appreciate you taking my phone calls and I also appreciate you calling me and you know, us being able to kind of like figure things out together because, you know, God knows this has not been a simple time. And, you know, you can read the the DESI press releases all you want, but you kind of have to process, what does that mean for us? And what does that mean for Middleboro? And you've been so helpful to me in being a sounding board, but also helping me to process these things. So I'm really going to miss you on the committee, but I know, like Teresa said, you're not going anywhere. So I hope we just continue to cross paths and thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Meg, you had your hand up, so go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greg, I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done the past few years. I think your knowledge as far as student council and the kind of the sports piece of things is really important for the board and we're definitely going to miss that. So I just wanted to wish you good luck and, like everybody said, you'll still be around. So hopefully we can all stay in touch and you can reach out to us and we can reach out to you. It's just another resource in the community. So thank you.
So Greg, I get to go last, but thank you for everything you've done. And, you know, I know you've really worked hard and this COVID has been a little overwhelming and, you know, on top of it, you have young kids and, you know, you had to sacrifice a lot of times. And I know I appreciate that, as does everyone here. But thank you for all you do. You've been a great sounding board for me if I needed some insight from, you know, a teacher who works in another town, or if I had a high school question or anything like that, especially around sports with your background. And especially the two of us could bitch about the MIAA all the time we needed to. But I want to thank you for that because you were always there whenever I needed you and I appreciate you stepping up for that. So thank you very much.
And then thank you. Thank you all for the kind words. And and like you mentioned, I'm not going anywhere. I'm just, I'm not going to be part of this committee and I plan to help out Middleboro any way I can. And I was honored to serve and thank you very much. Thank you, Greg. Does anyone have anything else they wish to mention on to bring up, Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Sure. I just wanted to throw one last plug in. Please, if you haven't already, make your plan to vote on Saturday, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I believe you can, if, you know, if this hap, if maybe you don't remember where you're supposed to go, or you maybe this is your first time voting. I know that if you Google, where can I vote? There's a vote.org webpage that pops up and you just type in your address and it'll tell you whether you're at the Council on Aging or the High School or Point. So just please make a plan because sometimes you get halfway through the day and you realize, wow, I still got three more things I have to do. I just can't fit it anymore. But if you make a plan and you and you pick a time, I think your chances are pretty good of getting there. So please, everyone, get out and vote.
Anybody else? Say no one with that. I'll turn it over to superintendent, the superintendent's report. Brian, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the committee. I'd like to begin by thanking Mr. Rowe for his service. As you know, Mr. Chair, I was at the Elks on Saturday afternoon presenting the certificate for Elk Citizen of the Year to Mr. Young for the community of Middleboro and beyond, which is a great award, but I did make some remarks. They asked me to make some remarks and I think they pertain to the entire committee. I mentioned the fact that, you know, Rich and I have a number of things in common, but one of them is that we both try to work real hard to make the Middleboro Public School system a better place. And the difference between Rich and I and between the committee and I, myself, is that I get paid for it. You folks are volunteers. And I think the folks in Middleboro need to realize that that the time you spend in these meetings and the time you spend doing your readings and doing your homework for meetings is time away from everything else and it's a sacrifice. And I just think that this goes to Rich and it goes to everybody else on this committee that we thank you very much as a town for your continued service. So congratulations, Rich, and your next steps and 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 thank you to the committee for your continued volunteerism in the community of Middleboro. So and we'll move on from there on to my report, Mr. Chair. COVID-19 updates and the reopening of schools. I just want to let everyone in the community know that we're ready to go. Okay, through eight for a full reopening on April 5th. We spent a lot of time this week, a lot of people spent a lot of time this week. Present company excluded, really. I went to visit and saw some of what was going on. But we had teachers, a special subject teachers, ESPs, administration, custodians, maintenance and a tech department working real hard to put those pieces of the puzzle that you saw last week that were seemed to be in a box all stacked up and put them in the places where they belong. And I've invited Derek Thompson, principal of the HBB Berkeley, the Berkeley School, Henry B. Berkeley School to come on with us tonight. He's in his office at Berkeley School. Probably just got done moving some desks, but he was an important part of the planning, an important part of the, like every principal was, of putting a school back together. So he's prepared just a slideshow tonight, a quick slideshow on reassembling Henry B. Berkeley School based on some of the pictures you saw last week that might have been disconcerting to some folks who are watching. And I know I received a couple of comments like, how can you possibly put that, all those puzzle pieces together? And I just want to show you what some of the work that's been done this week by all of those folks I mentioned. And if I didn't mention somebody specifically or a group specifically, I apologize. But welcome, Mr. Thompson, and go right ahead. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. It's been an exciting week. It was, it's been a busy week, certainly, but it's been, you know, all for a good cause and we're really excited. I've been taking pictures throughout this whole process just because I don't know, we're living history right now. So I'm hopeful that, you know, in the not too distant future, we'll be looking back at this time and maybe even have a laugh about it. But I've been taking pictures throughout, so I sent some pictures over to Mr. Lynch today. So so Sean, I don't know if you can bring up those, bring up the slides there with the pictures, but so just going to walk through some some of these pictures here. It's been an amazing week. We, as Mr. Lynch mentioned, it's been really all hands on deck. We've had in this picture, you can see Mr. Phoenix, one of our PE teachers and Mr. Thomas is assembling desks. Everyone that wasn't responsible for a classroom was in here helping out. And we can keep moving those slides. We have a couple of pictures here of just some of the staff assembling desks. Kate Cooney and Kristen McLaren and Kate McGovern just moving furnitures, moving air purifiers, moving things around, laughing while we were doing it. People are excited to get the kids back in the building. So again, here just Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Whitelaw, Mrs. McDonald, Mrs. Doak, all just moving furniture around. We're using the stage for storage. Mr. Dawson on the left, you see Mr. Farley there on the lift. I'm up above in the gym taking that picture. This is a good picture. You get a good idea of what it takes to store things at HBB. We had a lot of materials to move up above. So in that picture right there, Mr. Farley is getting the lift ready because we have to put things on that lift to raise it up above the gym. And when we go to the next slide, you'll see a couple of pictures of just some of the stuff we had to put up above there, all the tables we had to get out of the classrooms and all the carpets that we rolled up and got up there. So that was a pretty big undertaking. We can keep moving there in the slides. Here you see the transformation on the left side of the gym. We took it from looking like a classroom to a bunch of separate spaces for the lunches. We also were able to cordon off a section in the back corner there in the far, in the distance there for champions. That's what they're, where they're going to be located. And in the next slide, you see the next section of the gymnasium. So on the left, you see what it looked like before with a grade two classroom in there and we broke everything down and then set up what is essentially our lunchroom there with all the plastic dividers in between each class. In this picture, you can see what the cafeteria looked like before with the classroom and we're using the bookshelves to divide things up. And in the next slide, you will see you know, an empty cafeteria because we got everything out of there and then set up desks in there for MKG. The MKG custodians came down and set all those desks in there with the chairs and got everything ready for their lunch. And then, you know, in the slides to come, you just see some of the classrooms that we shared pictures before. You have a classroom here that was used for computer storage. We found other homes for all of that and got the got the classroom set up. Some of these pictures, I think as we go, they become more kind of shocking when you see the before and after pictures. Each of these are classrooms that were used to storage and as of about 3 o'clock today, when I walked around taking pictures, you can see where we've progressed so far. So and I think that might, this might be the last slide here. Again, just a bunch of classrooms that were used to storage that were broken down and set up with desks. The teachers were in today. The energy really is great in the building. Everyone's just excited to bring the kids back and you know, I think there's a number of us that felt like we helped 10 different people move their homes. Lot of sore shoulders and arms and legs, but all done with great energy. Everyone's excited to get the kids back. So so yeah, that's it. Feel a little bit like my grandfather walking you through a slideshow. He used to make me watch when I was a kid there after he went on a vacation.
Mr. Thompson, before we have a school committee ask a period of questions here if they'd like. You mentioned that you were walking down the hall and there was an employee that was coming up in tears, seemingly upset, and you approached her to ask her what was up. Can you share that story with us if you'd like? You don't have to use names.
Yeah, so just pick up the story where Brian left off. I just asked her what was going on and she was just teared up because she was amazed at how everybody really just came together and put the building together and they were just tears of joy. She was really happy that the kids are coming back and how, I mean, it was like a swarm of ants in this building with the staff. It was like just attacking every room, moving stuff around. For a little while, the building looked like a complete war zone because we took everything out of the class and brought them in the halls. It seemed overwhelming, but, you know, many hands make light work and I know it was the case in the other buildings as well. So it was really cool to see. So her tears were tears of joy. So and people are excited to get the kids back, like I said.
And this was just an example. I didn't want to bring back every administrator back, but this was a perfect example of some before and afters that are very clear of the work that went on this week. So any questions for any school committee person with regard to this with to Derek or myself? The reorganization, the reassemblage.
Meg, go right ahead.
Not a question, just a comment. This is amazing. Looking at all of the pictures and just you can really visualize all the work it took. So just please thank everyone in your buildings. Just the amount of work that everyone has done in really three days, four days is incredible. So thank you.
Yeah, I certainly will express those sentiments to them.
Mr. Oakley, you had your hands up.
Yep, I have a feeling maybe we're all about to say the same thing. But yeah, just the pictures. I mean, we knew it was a lot, obviously, but the pictures just really drive it home and I'm sure that you guys went into this line of work to be working with kids and and this has got to be an incredible feeling to be getting them back. So thank you so much for everything you're doing. I mean, I don't, I don't work in a school, but it's making me a little emotional just thinking about you know, getting, ending this nightmare and getting back to to reality. So thank you for everything.
Yeah, thank you. It is exciting. It's really, really looking forward to getting the kids back next week. So and I know the kids are too. We had, we had a bunch of kids coming in here today. We had, we had a pickup for cohort four. I know you know, the last step will be when we get all of those kids back next year. That'll be exciting. I know it's not, you know, we're not getting everybody back and it's not fully back to normal, but it's a nice step. So.
Awesome. Any other questions for Derek or myself?
Before you go on, Brian, I just want to make a comment because it's related to this. Someone asked me and I apologize and I forget who. Someone asked me if we could do something for staff, given everything that they had. I had a conversation with Sarah and Brian. We do have money in our school committee account. So if no one objects, the chair, what I'll do is I'll set up lunch for staff in each school building. I'll work out with the principals what the best day is for that. But if it's okay, Chair would entertain a motion to do that. Since I'll be spending school committee money, I would prefer to do it with the school committees brought up. Yeah, and I have a second discussion. Again, just so everyone knows, Anne gave me the numbers for each of the schools. I'll work with I'll work with somebody in the area to get that done because I don't want anyone from the school doing everything and obviously want everybody to be able, you know, we want it to be for everybody in each building, secretaries, custodians, cafeteria people. So we'll make sure that there's lunch for everybody. So any further discussion? Hearing none of those in favor say aye. Oh, I got a roll call. Sorry. Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So I'll make sure I link up with the principals and find what the best day for them is between now and the end of the year.
So many thanks to Mr. Thompson, Mrs. White, Mrs. Latenda, all their staffs, all their faculty, all their teach, obviously teacher staffs, administration, maintenance, custodials, everybody that took to put this place back together. So we do thank them. They do have one more day of of teacher PD tomorrow. And in closing out this piece a little bit, I just want to thank those parents that are home with a cohort that would have been in school and for your cooperation with regard to this. This was necessary, necessary step and and we do appreciate that. And the good news is that for those folks that want their students back in school, starting next Monday, they will be. Bus transportation, it will be the same routes as they've been in the past. The times will be as close as possible. They may, it may take a couple of days to get the times back like it does at the beginning of the year. Because the buses could go a little quicker when they only had half the students on. But it'll be the same routes and the same stops. Just more kids at each stop. So it will take a little bit longer. So thank you, Mr. Thompson. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Last week, we had some questions with regard to the financial impact of COVID-19 on the Middleboro Public Schools. And for answers with regard to that, I've asked Sarah Hickey, our Director of Business and Finance, to come forward and explain in more specifics in terms of what monies have been available to us, what monies we've spent and and what the future looks like in terms of being able to make some necessary changes with some additional monies that have been brought forward from the federal government. So and through Plymouth County, but it originally came through the Plymouth, through through the federal government. So welcome, our Director of Business and Finance, Sarah Hickey, and the stage is yours.
It's always more effective when you can hear me. I apologize. Thank you, Superintendent Lynch, and thank you very much for having me, school committee members. So last week, Mr. Rowe asked me about the financial impact that COVID-19 had had on the Middleboro Public Schools and I love getting questions like that because it gave me an opportunity to roll up my sleeves and put together numbers for you. So if Mr. Siciliano could start the slideshow for me, the, this is what I have put together for you. I apologize that this is it is small print, but I thought it would be helpful to start off with a timeline of the funding that happens for us. So I started with July 1, 2020. So if you go across the bottom, those are the major deadlines or the four different funding sources for us. So we had monies that were available until December 31, 2020. We had some monies that are available until June 30, 2021. We have some monies that are available until December 31, 2021, others until September 30, 2022, and then September 30, 2023. And then what I did was I put those little rectangles of the different thing, the different funding sources that became available to us. So the one at the top is the Plymouth County Cares Act reimbursement program. That is something, as you can see, it is ongoing and it ends on December 31. Underneath that was a small grant that we received over the summer, the Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant. Underneath that, the Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief Fund that we call that the S R One Fund. That is money that became available last summer and we have until September 30 of 2022 to spend that. There are two different funding sources that became available in February, February. One is the State Coronavirus Prevention Fund. That is money that is being given to us in two payments. One payment came in in February and one in April. And all of that money needs to be spent by June 30. And then the underneath that is the Special Support earmark, which was the funding that came from Senator Pacico's office. And again, that needs to be spent by June 30. I also put on here the Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief Fund S R Two. That is a grant that I am in the process of writing. The grant for that is due on July 30. I intend to have that grant written and submitted before then so that we will have those funds available to us beginning on July 1. And that grant is available through September 30, 2023. Could you go to the next slide, Sean, please? Thank you. So the the rest of my presentation is just the the breakdown of all of those rectangles that I had put on the timeline for you. So the Plymouth County Cares Act, Plymouth County received approximately $90 million pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. The money was designated specifically for The money was designated specifically for state and local governments to be expended for allowable purposes related to COVID-19. So once a month I put together, uh, Chief Benjamina is in charge of the Plymouth Cares Act reimbursement for the town. He works very hard and we appreciate the work that he does organizing this for the whole town. Once a month I submit a spreadsheet to him of all of the eligible expenses. I have to, um, put onto the spreadsheet what the vendor was, how much it was, when we purchased it, what, uh, which of the six categories that it's classified as to be eligible for these monies that came from the US Treasury. I have to put down the check number that we spent, um, the check number for the money that we spent, and I also give the warrant number that it came under. So thus far this year, the Middleborough Public Schools has submitted $632,249 for reimbursement by Plymouth County. Uh, the only time that I have had any questions from them about anything we submitted was back in the fall. Uh, as I said, I do re, I do submit once a month approximately for reimbursement. So I submitted last week. They may have questions on that. They probably won't, but, um, as I said, the only time they've asked me questions so far has been last fall. I also wanted to include on here that there has been $511,304 submitted by the Middleborough High School School Building Project. Most, um, when, when the money first came to the state from the US Treasury, the, the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, was given money to give to school systems that were building schools for their COVID mitigation. Middleborough did not receive that money through the MSBA because we are in Plymouth County. And so our school building committee, um, and our owner's project manager have been very good about aggregating the COVID mitigation costs and submitting those for reimbursement. The next reimbursement submission for Plymouth County is scheduled for April 28th. And I am very much looking forward to submitting for reimbursement the, uh, invoice for the 2,000 computers that were ordered, received and are being paid for this week. Next slide, please. Over the summer, money became available in what was called by the state, the Remote Learning Technologies Essentials Grant. It was, uh, the amount of money available to Middleborough was $6,892. The Remote Learning Technology Essential Funds had to be used to support the LEA is Local Education Association. So that's basically, it's a school. So the funds had to be used to support the school's effort to ensure that the students had access to devices and internet services necessary to access remote learning opportunities. This is money that Middleborough used to purchase hotspot devices and to pay the monthly contracts on these hotspot devices for people that did not have internet accessible to them. It was a, uh, again, $6,892 that did not pay for all of the, um, hotspots and all of the service that we had, but it did, uh, pay a portion of what we've had. Next slide, please. The, the Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief Fund, it was originally called the ESER Grant, and then over the winter that started calling it the ESER One, because now we know there's going to be an ESER Two. Middleborough's allocation for the ESER One Grant was $364,274. This money was allocated to us largely based on the Title One Funding Formula. Districts are permitted to use the ESER funds to address the impact COVID-19 has had and continues to have on elementary and secondary schools. Districts that receive ESER funds must provide equitable services to students and teachers in non-public schools located within the district's boundaries. So for this grant, we, I had to reach out to all of these private schools within the town of Middleborough to offer them a portion of this grant. I also had to reach out to the private schools where students from Middleborough attend if the students fell into the low income category. So a portion of these monies went to, uh, two different private schools that fell under that category of equitable service. The permitted use for these ESER funds, these funds have been used for, uh, a number of things. We have used this for sta, uh, salaries of staff that were hired to, uh, because of the COVID crisis, we've used these funds to purchase PPE, to purchase cleaning supplies. Um, this, this grant, which is available to us to spend until September 30th of 2022, is actually completely allocated and will be um, spent by June 30th of this year. Next slide, please. In February, I became aware of this State Coronavirus Prevention Fund Program. This was monies that came to us through the state legislature. The, we were allocated $149,535, uh, $537.50. This is money that we're receiving in two payments. One came the last week in February and one will come this month in April. The eligible uses for these funds include, but are not limited to personal protective equipment, hygienic supplies, costs associated with socially distanced onsite learning, remote learning or hybrid approaches as determined by the district, charter school or collaborative. Recipients can also use their funds for any expenses required to ensure that low income and other vulnerable students receive assistance and support that provides them equal access to educational opportunities, including but not limited to assistance overcoming technological hurdles, hurdles to learning and access to social services, mental health and behavioral health resources to address the potential trauma and other effects of the pandemic on students. So this money, uh, this fund was the first one that came out that talked about the social emotional learning, talked about, uh, the potential trauma to students and talked about mental health. Um, we have had many sources of funding where we could purchase technology. We've had many sources of funding where we could purchase personal protective equipment. Um, and again, that's all available with this fund as well. But here we, um, are exploring the use of this towards social services, mental health and behavioral health resources for students in the district. This fund is available, these monies in this fund are available to us until the end of June. We are work, not all of this money has been allocated as of this point, but there are, uh, things coming in every day that we are charging against these monies. Next slide, please. On the last slide and on this slide, I actually gave you the wording exactly from the State Department of Education about, um, how the monies can be allocated. So this Special Support earmark was the money that was allocated by Senator Pacheco's office. It is $62,500. And the only information that we have available about how this money can be spent is the line that was in the, the law that was passed that says not less than $125,000 shall be expended equally to the school systems of the town of Middleborough and Wareham to provide necessary technology for distance learning for underserved students made necessary by the COVID-19 pandemic. So this, um, out of all of the monies that we have had to spend, this is, we're thankful to have this, but this has been the most restrictive. Um, we are using this money to purchase, uh, laptop devices for students. Next slide, please. So the last one I want to talk about, uh, the last funding source is the ESER Two Grant. The Elementary and Secondary Education Emergency Relief Fund. Middleborough has been allocated $1,264,128 in this ESER Two Grant. Uh, I am in the process of writing this grant. We're, um, we're figuring out how we're going to be spending this money. The Department of Education was very clear in all of the webinars that I have gone to and all the trainings about this grant, that there are three distinct areas of which they want the money spent. That money can be allocated towards academic and instruction and the state is looking for evidence-based approaches to address unfinished teaching and learning. This, um, we also need to address social or emotional supports, uh, for, and parents and student engagement to address student mental health and well-being and engagement in learning. And then the last part of this grant is operations and that is to address ongoing planning, coordinating and provision of services related to COVID-19. So part of this grant is academics, part of it is social emotional, the last part is operations. Um, and I'm in the process of working with the different groups for which this would, um, be allocated. So for example, operations, that's largely going to be conversations with Jim Hutchinson. Things that can be covered under the operations would be upgrades to HVAC, um, and, and physical plant. And then the academics instruct, and instruction naturally is conversations with the principal and the leadership team. And we're putting together a group to address how we're going to go about the social emotional supports and parent and student engagement. Thank you. Uh, the last slide just asks, do you have any questions for me?
Teresa, go right ahead.
Uh, thank you. Sarah, you clearly have done a great job with this and it appears you found, um, just almost every dollar possibly um, available to us. So fantastic work. But, um, you did mention the hotspots and how that was only paid for a certain portions. Can you just, I may have missed it because there was so much.
Yes, yes. So if you think back to the first slide, which had the timeline on it, the hotspot was a small amount of money that was only available to us for a small amount of time. But we needed the, we needed the hotspots. So we purchased the hotspots and we're paying for the fees to activate the hotspots, the monthly user fees. Part of the Remote Learning Technologies Essential Grant went to that and part of the ESER One Grant is going to that. So there was overlap between different funding sources. Um, and so there were some things that we pay a little out of here and a little out of somewhere else. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a quick point?
Go right ahead, Brian.
Just wanted to mention the fact that you'll recall perhaps my frustration in that, uh, a number of the other school districts in the Commonwealth received $225 per student uh, through this Cares Act. It went, the money that went to the state and then went to the Department of Elementary Ed. We were excluded from that because our county decided, because it said state lo, state and county governments, uh, they sort of intercepted the ball, if you remember the conversations about that. Uh, what's happened now, actually, is if we had taken, if we had just had $225 per student at, at about 3,000 students, we had, had about, let's say, $675 to $678,000, which would have been great. But right now, from cares Plymouth County, we've already put in for $632,249. We have $400,000 more we're putting in for those 2,000 Chromebooks. And we received $500,000 plus for reimbursement for the building project with other, which other building projects in the Commonwealth have not received. So we're, we're in a place where financially, this whole intercepted ball from Plymouth County will work out in our favor in terms of the cares reimbursement. Uh, obviously there's less overhead at the state level. Uh, there's less of the money getting dispersed around to different departments. Uh, and I think it's moved, it's, it's helped us. It's been to our advantage that initially, though we didn't get that money in a big chunk block, uh, eventually we'll get much more than what we originally, just what we would have received had we not been, uh, had Plymouth County not sort of, uh, just grabbed that nice ball, uh, and, and run, run with it. So I just wanted to mention that sort of historical piece there. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if I could add, um, and I, I'm going to be showing my age with this, but if you remember the cartoon from the olden days of Scrooge McDuck, who had a vault of money and he would go in and roll around in all of the money because he could. I want to be very clear that yes, this is a lot of money, but this is not something that's just, you know, no one's rolling around in this. For example, we have special ed students that have required additional services this year because of their IEP, their individualized education plans and because of our circumstances last year. And so we're providing additional services for students and that is getting charged to these funds. So yes, it's a lot of money and we have spent every single penny and, and will spend every single penny on what it is that we're requi, you know, we're paying for additional teachers. We're paying for teachers to teach additional classes. Um, there's, there's not a vault of money that anybody is rolling around in because it's going to be an empty room at the end of it all.
The, the online academy, online learning academy costs us a lot of money. Uh, the addition of well over a thousand desks, it cost us a lot of money. Um, money that we would not normally get back had it not been for cares. So although we're, we're, we're getting reimbursed for the money from, from these sources, which is great. These additional grants, the ESER Grant, ESER One, ESER Two. And between you and I on the fence post, we're looking at potentially down the road in ESER Three that's coming in. Um, will be money that we can rebuild our school system on with social emotional supports, parent, student engagement, additional level of, of student engagement through the summer. Um, and we are, we already have our principals working on, uh, some summer opportunities and some opportunities right now for the rest of the school year. At the high school example for credit recovery, uh, at the Nichols Middle School, some opportunities for credit recovery. Those students that were not attending virtually as much as they should have, that have not done well grade wise. Uh, trying to get them back up to speed prior to the end of the year. So we're not talking about mandated retention uh, for students, et cetera. So those, I know that Heidi Latenda and, and Paul Branigan, I've already had conversations with them about what they're doing at their level to try to get some of these students back, to get some credit recovery. So that we're not talking about a great deal of, of retention, et cetera. So, uh, just some things that are going on. There's going to be obviously more planning and everything else that's, we'll, we'll be moving on as soon as we get our our K eight in and I get our plan for the high school and we'll be starting to plan specifically about what we can do with some of these monies for those academics, instruction, social emotional support, um, and student engagement and parent engagement. So.
Mr. Oakley, you had a question. Go right ahead.
Sure. And it's more of a statement and I, I appreciated what you said, Mrs. Hickey, about um, kind of just drawing attention to the fact that, yeah, these are big numbers, but it, it doesn't, doesn't mean we have that vault of coins. Um, and I just wanted to say, as just a member of the budget subcommittee, and I'm sure Meg would agree that had, had it not been for these grants, things would, would have been much different. Um, so, uh, we, we certainly appreciate all these opportunities of, of these grants that came along, but they were very much necessary just to, uh, maintain the level of service, uh, that, that we have as a school district.
Other questions? Uh, Mr. Rowe, go right ahead.
Um, thank you. If, if this was inspired by my question, wow, you went well above and beyond, um, what I would expect and, and the explanations were excellent because, because my concern was how much did COVID cost us? And how do we continue providing what we're providing moving forward? And you answered all of that. But with, you know, over $1 million being reimbursed between Plymouth County and then the ESER Grants providing another million moving forward. I feel confident that is one, one thing as, as awful as this year has been. Um, there has been a price, both, you know, emotionally and financially to it, um, for school districts. And moving forward, I hope they can take what good things happened. Mr. Brandon can give a perfect example of the American Sign Language class, you know, keep the good things that happened and move it forward. And hopefully this continues to do that and, and. to do that, and I'm in full confidence that you guys have managed this so well. That was impressive, how you picked and moved and bobbed and weaved to where you could get reimbursed. I'm in full confidence that we can continue the good things that we learned as we moved to the new normal and more of a sense of normal, so you keep all the good things that were going on. So well done, thank you.
It has been a little bit of a juggling act. I've had conversations here in my office, because, you know, yes, we do have the ESER money, yes, the ESER money is allocated, yes, we can submit for reimbursement to Plymouth County, but we have a deadline of June 30th for some funds, and so we are, you know, it's, I'm not charging things as much to Plymouth County right now because I'm spending down other things, just because the deadlines, they drop dead points for those monies, come sooner. I enjoyed making the timeline because it gave a visual picture, and I printed a copy out for in my office, just so we could talk about this.
I think the other point too, to remember, is how this year started prior to the fiscal year, which is because, as Brian said, so many communities were just getting a one-time additional fee. Those communities made the decision to decimate certain programs. They destroyed their music programs, they destroyed their arts programs. We didn't do that. You know, we saw, you know, in addition to that, if you go back, the town was good to us and allowed us to transfer savings that we had from the busing contract from last March through June, and move that into this year too, to make sure that we had monies available and we're doing things beforehand. So all in all, I think we've done really, really well, and we've managed this fiscally responsibly and manage it in the best interest of our kids. So I'm proud of everybody for doing that, not only everybody here, but also the town side too, because they did a great job with us too.
Thank you, and thank you, Sarah Hickey. Appreciate your slideshow and your information. Next, I have on my report, just an additional school choice update. We had mentioned some class size, current class size numbers. You have information in your Dropbox that includes that. I think it's important to note, moving forward, that there are still some question marks about enrollment. They involve the kindergarten class and what that kindergarten class looks like with regard to the numbers. There may be need potentially for an additional kindergarten teacher. I may, again, I may, when I mentioned principals earlier, I may have misspoken, forgotten Jeremy Goble, but he worked just as hard as the other principals too. So at the Early Childhood Center, we're not sure what that kindergarten is going to look like. We're not sure if those folks that maybe kept their kindergarten-age students home this year might want to enroll them in kindergarten for next year. So there are some ifs there with regard to kindergarten registration. With regard to ninth grade registration, we're not sure, we know how many applications went to Bristol Plymouth, we're not sure how many kids will be accepted. We also don't know exactly how many kids are going to either Norfolk or Bristol Agricultural Schools, and there are always a good number of, we're a farming community, as you know, and there are a number of students that want to attend those schools. Bristol County, Bristol Plymouth does not offer an agricultural component, that's why those students can go to either Norfolk or Bristol Aggie, depending on what agricultural program they want to go into. And those are very expensive schools, but we budget for them, and hopefully we've budgeted enough money in each of those. The other wild card here is the fact that we doubled our number of students that went into homeschool education. We could potentially cut that in half, and if we cut that in half, that's also included on your form, on your sheet there at the bottom, with potential students returning from homeschool, which could certainly happen for next year. So all of those, those sort of three or four or five wild cards are going to make a real, are going to be a determining factor into how many students we can bring in on school choice for kindergarten and for the high school and for some of the other grades too, when we look at numbers. So I don't think we're in a position where we can determine numbers right now. I think we're in a position where we need to stay on the watch here, and as we get more information, I'll have this on my report each meeting, so I can give you updates on exactly where we are with kindergarten enrollment, exactly where we are with Bristol Plymouth, exactly where we are with the Aggie schools. And we're going to try to survey those folks that did go homeschool this year, that doubled our number of homeschools. As you know, we went from about 63 or 70 to about 140 or a little bit more. So I think that we're looking at maybe bringing 70 or 75 of them back, and if we do, that's going to affect class sizes in all grade levels in all schools. So I would certainly entertain the wish of the committee on that and how you want me to handle that.
I think that makes sense, Brian. I think it makes sense to delay it and look at it, but I'll open it up to everybody. Teresa, you had your hand up, and I know.
So just so I'm clear here, and I know this is just an ongoing conversation right now, but once we do have those numbers, the ultimate goal really is to bring, if we can, at least as many into district through school choice to kind of balance out what we've paid out.
We can look at our projected, yes, Ms. Farley, through you, Mr. Chair, we look at our projected numbers based on our school choice enrollment now, which is 39 students, and can we add certain numbers of students to certain grades and not affect class size adversely for our students who are currently enrolled? So that's the balancing act, if you will. And where we've already allowed students in, there's what's called the stay-put clause, that those students are ours, and they're no longer, they're school choice students by classification, but they're our students, period, as long as they'd like to stay. So that's the current status of that.
Okay.
Megan?
Yep, sorry.
Megan, I saw your hand up, so go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, is there a date that we have to, like, solidify numbers by?
I believe we'd be looking at June 1, potentially May 1 is probably the better date, but we'll have that information, I think, by May 1, or by that, perhaps the first meeting in May, that we can make that determination exactly how many we're looking at. We also have a brand-new high school that was built for 720 plus 15%, so a little bit above 800, and we need to look at that number very carefully in terms of who we can keep and who we can't keep. We used to have a policy where we sort of, if a student wanted to stick around for a while, we opened up school choice, but the rules have changed, the advisory has changed on school choice, and we have to open it up twice a year, and that's pretty much it. So those are the numbers we have to watch pretty carefully. We don't want to over-enroll a school because it's built for our Middleborough kids, and if we bring school choice kids in, then that's fine, but we have to be careful and we have to balance our needs based on that.
Thank you. Just, Mr. Chair, I have a question for you, I think. Is there a date where we, as a board, have to have numbers set in stone what we're going to accept in?
No, not according to our policy, and just so, what I know, because I've lived in a community in the past in which we relied heavily on school choice, much so that essentially half the high school was school choice, because that's essentially the only way we could afford a high school at the time. There was the potential that you could run into situations in which you can establish numbers, and the award letters don't generally go out till the end of June, so you could change those numbers anytime up until the point the award letters went out. So for example, let's say you got an influx of students that you weren't expecting, or what we had seen in the past, there might have been several people who were in a, for example, a school closed down. So for example, in the past, we've known some of the Catholic schools in the area have closed, so that could bring kids back. So you have to be able to look at those things and address them, but once, once they're sort of given the award letter that they're in, they're in, but anytime up to that point, the school committee always had the ability to change if they felt something happened that they needed to address.
Okay, that basically concludes my report. Rich Oakley has a question, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Sorry, I was late on the draw there. Mr. Lynch, through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Lynch, thank you so much, and anyone else who helped prepare these numbers, that it's incredibly helpful to see, not only like you have the, you know, number of students, but also the number of classes. And so I just threw it in Excel real quick, so I could get an idea of number of students per class, and it all seems pretty good, but, you know, not being an educator, I was kind of curious if, and I'm assuming it changes by grade level, but is there kind of a rule of thumb for class sizes? Because I see we're, it looks like we're doing pretty well, but I just wonder what you think the ceiling is for some of that.
Yeah, we're doing very well, and it's important to know when you're looking at that sheet, Mr. Oakley, through you, Mr. Chair, that those are the current number of classrooms by grade level.
Yep.
So that if we have a particular class that's going up a grade, that needs six teachers in that grade to reduce those class sizes, we'll do that. Or if we have a number that's particularly low, we might reduce their number of teachers at that grade level. For example, if there's 99 students at a grade and there are six teachers assigned, we might take that teacher and move that up to a different grade where there are more students in that grade per school. So those are shifted annually and also looked at annually. So if we looked at a situation where we had, you know, we liked the number 20, we liked the number below 20, we're very fortunate to have that in our community. When the number gets a bit, a bit higher than that, we get a little bit concerned. I was a principal that worked at one point with 34 students in third grade, 10 third grade classrooms. That, to me, was something that I, as a principal, advocated strongly against. We ended up getting some extra help for those classrooms, but didn't get an additional teacher. I would certainly be going back to revisit with the Budget Subcommittee and with the School Committee if we had a situation like that, where we were looking at numbers where class sizes, where there were anomalies, but we had class sizes that were such that we think it needs addressing. All the studies out there basically say that the lower the grade, the lower the class size, the better. That's pretty much the summary of all research on class size, and we believe in that and will continue to do that. A third grade is more comfortable with 24 or 23 than a first grade with those same numbers. So we'd shift our numbers accordingly, and the principals understand that very well, so. And are not afraid to advocate to me to look to those positions too. And with these additional monies that we have, it might be easier to do moving forward too, if need be.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none.
So I just want to just sort of conclude my report by saying that at the next meeting, what you can expect, you can expect, obviously, another COVID-19 update with some talk about the high school and what we plan to do at the high school level. I want to talk about the Family Resource Center. I think that's important. I spoke with Meg Quirk this week and all the work she's done for the last year, and I think it's important that you folks know about that. So we get an annual report from the Family Resource Center, and I think this is a perfect time to do it. I want to talk about technology and our updates in technology, and I hope to have Dr. Gates here, who did help prepare these numbers, I would tell you that, on the sheet for class size, et cetera. But she is going to talk to us, give us a technology update. And also, as you know, we had a review by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education called Tier Focus Monitoring, which is a new way for this state to come and do an examination of everything we do in the special education areas and the civil rights areas. They have come in and done a report. It's been a very positive report that we received the last couple of days, and I want Carolyn Lyons to share that information with you and explain the tiered focus monitoring. She's talked about it before, but now we can talk about the results, and I think she can give a little woo-hoo moment, because she worked extremely hard on preparing that information. The state was, quite frankly, the state was very impressed with our school system, and I think it's up to her to share that out. So those are some of the items that you can look forward to hearing about in my next report, and anything else that you'd like to hear about, please communicate with the chair, communicate with me, and we can put it on the agenda if you want an update on a particular area of the school system and its operation.
And Brian, one thing that we should be able to talk about next week is the additional guidance on MCAS, especially around high school students, because that came out today.
That was released today, that additional information about MCAS throughout the grades, and we can certainly, I can certainly add that to my report for the next meeting.
That's fantastic. Any questions as a superintendent before we move on? Seeing no one, then the next item on our agenda is...
Mr. Chair, just before I go, I want to bookend my report by stating that when we talked at the Elks about the Citizen of the Year, I did mention the Family Resource Center and that how proud the chair is and how proud the committee is of what the Family Resource Center has done, and he had somebody walk up to him and gave him an anonymous donation for $50 to help with the Family Resource Center. So that sort of, that sort of bookends the Citizen of the Year. Congratulations again to Rich for that, but it also is a celebration of what's going on in the Middleboro Public Schools too. So thank you, and thank you to the committee. And thank you, Mr. Rob.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the high school building project. I should point out again, it is so far on time for April and again under budget. Did anyone have any particular questions? We actually meet this week, next week coming up, so at our 15th meeting, I'll have a better understanding of the final, the final day's push for the new building. Oh, Meg, go right ahead.
I had two questions. One, are we going to be able to get in and see it when it's completely done?
Yes.
Are parents and community members going to be able to do the same?
So that's going to be harder. I know Paul has talked in the past about trying to do things over the summertime and try to stagger people in and out, and we're going to, we're going to do the best we can. One of the things that we've talked about doing is, as I said from the very beginning, I felt that we'd move our meetings to the new high school. After a little bit of time and everything had worked out, it just seemed well. What I'd like to do is I'd like to start our meetings, and when I talk to Adam and everybody, is really start our meetings with some of the students filming parts of the new high school and take it piece by piece so that people can see, and maybe we can focus a little more on the Karen's, what the Karen Auditorium is going to be like, what the gym's going to be like, what that math classrooms look like, what the art program looks like. So it's really focused on a small piece, so maybe a five-minute video at the beginning of our meeting will just be on a piece of the new high school, knowing that people can't go in the way we'd like them to go in. So, you know, and as things open up, one of the things that we did in the past, when I, when we rehabilitated the previous high school I was in, in Avon, the first town meeting, we allowed people in earlier then and took them on walkthroughs before the town meeting. Now, this town meeting will be at the middle school, and the quorum doesn't have to be at, but, you know, we usually have a special town meeting in October, so hopefully by then, we can bring more people in and wander them around and show them parts of it, so hopefully people can come in a little earlier, and we'll do it that way. So we'll try to get, you know, we'll try to get, open it up for people as best we can and go from there. Sadly, we can't, you know, we can't even open up some of the fields for more than a parent right now, so it makes it difficult as it is.
Awesome, thank you.
No problem. Other questions about the project? With that, oh, I see if Brian wanted to mention anything about the... Go, Brian.
I did want to mention the fact that we continue to have owners and construction meetings every Thursday from 11 to 1. Mr. Hutchinson, Jim Hutch is involved in that, Mr. Branigan, Sean Siciliano, myself. I think we went, I think this week was week number 103, but that's really two hours now. It used to be sort of, hey, whose birthday is it? You know, we're coming along, we're swimming along here, we're moving along. Now it's a much more intense meeting. I would tell you that, that expectations from Fontaine Brothers for their subcontractors have been heightened significantly. They had a building that was supposed to be done in January. They didn't, when they put the bid in, they didn't anticipate COVID. They didn't anticipate people that were, companies that were not going to be showing up for work and the schedule being off, so they're now, you know, a full three months beyond their original delivery date of the school being open. Now, they were talking about October initially, so they have, they have told us that we're not going to be charged any additional monies, but you can imagine what it might be doing to their basic budget at this point. So, you know, we're appreciative of them, we're appreciative of Kristy Murphy, our ownest project manager, are certainly appreciative of DRA and Fontaine Brothers, and Rob DeRozio is also in every single one of those meetings. So there are people with good eyes on this project and watching it very carefully and closely, and it's, it's, it's something that we're looking to happen, and it's, we're bound and determined to make sure it does. So we're looking at April 27th, we're opening the school for as many students as we possibly can, and that's a conversation we're going to have with Mr. Branigan in terms of who do we bring back, so. Thank you.
No, thank you, Brian, I appreciate it. Any other questions before we move off this topic? And seeing no one, I just want to remind everybody, the superintendent evaluation, the superintendent sent us his outline on Monday, along with the evaluation instrument. his outline on Monday along with the evaluation instrument. If people could get that to me by Friday, that would be fantastic. I wanted to remind people that the day on the hill will be a little different this year. The superintendent and I have attended every chance that we've got and obviously it wasn't last year, but I believe they're doing it virtually this year. So if you uh, can attend, um, we can do that and we'll make sure you're signed up. Um, and as we discussed at last meeting, I wanted to talk about the school uh, committee meeting platform. Um, I do want to set it up this way because I think it's important. I know, as all of you know, it was brought up in open meeting in the Selectmen's Meeting and it sort of digressed from there. Um, so I would prefer not to talk about the Selectmen's Meeting because this item is truly about our platform and what we're gonna do. Uh, but I do not want to walk away without one piece. It it seemed to be that people were saying, we did not allow for people to comment and that is not true. We have, we have worked hard to make sure that people had ability to comment, people had ability to ask questions. And I have been on the committee for seven years now. Um, I have never been asked more comments than I have in the course of this year. Uh, because of the the forum that we have and the ability that we have for people to be allowed to ask questions and to really try to work to answer them. Sometimes obviously we don't have the answers and so, especially when we're beginning to open schools um, in the summertime and we went back and made sure those questions were answered. And in fact, a lot of, if you remember, we had, the superintendent created a frequently asked questions list. Um, and a lot of those came directly from our Facebook chats and our YouTube chats. And we took those and answered those and made sure that everyone's question was answered. I think sometimes we run into, people ask a question that's already been asked and answered. And we sort of, sort of gently point that out for people and we recognize that people come in and out of these meetings at a various time. So with that, before we discuss, um, I want to bring in Sean because I asked Sean to do some things for us. And Sean, can you talk about what you found from the meetings that we've done so far and that document you sent us?
Yep, absolutely. Let me uh, just share that real quick. So you guys should be able to see this document on your screen. Uh, this is just data that we've pulled from Facebook. Um, you can obviously see kind of the hot meetings uh, where we discuss things that greatly impacted our families and greatly impacted our community. You're looking at eight thousand two hundred ninety-five people reaching one of the meetings. These are not necessarily live viewers, right? So we've had a lot, we've had a lot more people live view. Uh, sometimes we have a hundred and fifty, two hundred people viewing live. Uh, that's about a hundred ninety more people than I've ever seen in the middle school auditorium for a school committee meeting. The uh, we have shares, we have comments, comments are usually our questions, things like that. And then our link clicks are usually people that are clicking on the meeting to watch um, either full screen or watching it after or watching it in its entirety. Um, so that was just a document that I had put together. Uh, and that's just Facebook. We still have YouTube comments um, that I didn't pull the data for and also YouTube views. Um, one of the cool things about StreamYard is that it does, it does capture that, does capture that data for us live. I'm gonna stop this. It captures all that information for us. We can see live comments, we can see all that. We can watch it on YouTube, we can watch it on Facebook. Uh, we just set up the RT uh, MP stream for MET. So we're actually streaming our first meeting uh, live on the MET channel on cable. Um, so we set that up earlier today, which is, looks like it's working, so we hope people enjoy that. But it's one more platform that we can reach people. Uh, we have the questions email that I monitor every day during the meeting and uh, also the comment section, so.
So Sean, just to go over a couple of points that you and I had discussed earlier this week, the first being this. Um, we have the ability to expand StreamYard um, to sort of the next level of StreamYard. And that next level um, would allow us not only to have more people on screen, but also to hit more platforms than we currently are able to hit, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. So we currently have three, uh, we call them destinations. So a destination is considered a Facebook page, a YouTube channel, uh, cable stream which we've hit now. Um, so right now we're live broadcasting on Facebook, on the district Facebook page, the district YouTube channel and the MET cable channel. So those are our three streams and that's all we're allowed through our current platform. The upgraded fee, uh, the upgraded platform allows you up to eight streams. So I was thinking you could do your five schools plus the three platforms that we're doing now. You could also do, have twelve people in the, in the StreamYard, only ten people on stage at a time. But it allows us to have people in the background so that we can more seamlessly go through the meetings. Sometimes we have to kind of kill time while we're waiting for people to leave, while we're waiting for more people to get in. Uh, so that kind of condenses, allows us to condense the time and make it, make it a little bit more seamless, but the, the upgraded platform really is, I think, beneficial to not only us, but to our viewers. Um, when we have StreamYard, it allows us to go to YouTube. People can then, uh, if they, let's say the meeting started at seven o'clock, if they pop in at seven twenty, they can join the meeting live, but they can also go back to seven o'clock and watch it kind of on demand, uh, like a DVR on your cable, which is pretty cool. So they can see what they missed. And that's, that isn't really something that some of the other platforms offer and that's why I'm a real fan of it. And I think that it would be beneficial for us to move forward and increase our subscription.
And Sean, one other thing too is with the StreamYard subscription upgraded, if the district had something else going on tonight, as of right now, you can only broadcast the school committee meeting, for example. So let's say there was a um, a black box production or something like that, you couldn't do both at the same time. Well, you could in theory, but it would be in violation of the licensee agreement, correct?
Yeah, so StreamYard, StreamYard really wants you to do one at a time. Um, I did reach out to them and they said that it's with so much going on right now, they're not really monitoring that um, on the channels, but with an increased professional plan, that would allow us to do multiple things at once. We're talking about uh, we have an amazing TV studio that I go in every day at the new building and we're gonna be putting out some pretty, some pretty quality productions out of there, uh, football games, volleyball games. Um, anything that's on that, that's on that uh, in the field or in the gyms in that area, we want to be able to broadcast live and we want to be able to overlap platforms and that's really gonna allow us to do that. And uh, you also get a upgraded video quality. So right now the video quality is seven twenty for everyone that speaks video quality. I don't know how many of people there are out there, but uh, we're, we're in seven twenty right now, which is high definition, but it's not, it's not ultra-high def, it's not high clear, uh, things like, not super clear. And the ten eighty would give us that high definition quality in the professional.
And so just so everyone understands, the the StreamYard, the downside to the StreamYard is that we can't allow as many people to join the actual, as you guys know, it's called the backstage, it's the backstage. Um, and so, given that I can't open that up to everybody, I don't allow other people other than the people on the agenda. And Sean's been really good about rotating people through the agenda and making sure. The difference with a Zoom product is Zoom would allow us essentially as many people as want to be on the screen, Sean, if I'm correct. But we can't link it to other platforms. So it can't be on Facebook, it can't be on YouTube. It can't be in the way, it just goes to the one platform, right Sean?
So that's, yeah, that's partially true. So there, there is ways to get it to a platform. But it's not as, it's, the Facebook and the YouTube integration are really built into this platform. And that's really what they've kind of put this entire platform together on. With Zoom, we could do it, you would probably need a secondary computer to to log in and be able to screen share and be able to go through an encoder to get it to that, to that platform. Um, so it's not as seamless. The other thing is with StreamYard, I can create kind of our, our visual of what we want to see. I can bring people up full screen, I can choose who's on stage and who's not on stage. Um, I can easily screen share, I can switch through screen shares and display people or not display people um, in the, on the screen. And I think it really gives me a lot of customization and to be able to kind of hone in the audience on what we're actually focusing on. I know in Zoom, sometimes you get a lot of people in your, there's multiple screens going on and people are popping up and people are going away and uh, sometimes it's just a lot and I really like the cleanliness of um, of StreamYard.
Greg, go right ahead. Um, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, Sean, I I did notice, it's kind of piggybacking what you said, when you're on a Zoom, there's fifteen different um, squares going on at once, or if someone talks, they pop on, then somebody coughs and they pop on, then they pop off. With this, you seem to have complete director, directorial control. For example, when we were doing the presentation on the budget, you were able to make it full screen. Now, if you're watching that on a phone, if you're in a Zoom meeting, that would be very about half the screen, while you were able to make it full screen. And I've been on multiple platforms, I teach on Google Meet, I've had tons of Zoom meetings. Um, StreamYard is the best for what I call presentation. When, when you're on another forum, it's like, okay, click and we'd wait twenty-five, thirty seconds for something to load up and everyone to see. So that has been an advantage. So it it's been fascinating kind of seeing you bring in the graphics, you can pop the questions on the screen. You can't, you can do a lot of directorial things that I've really been appreciative, especially if if my iPad has run out of battery and I need to see the the numbers that Sarah's talking about and boom, she puts them right on the screen, you make it full screen. So I was just wondering, is, is this a superior for the editorial and directorial part of the um, platforms, I should say? Do you have more control?
Yeah, absolutely. I think this kind of brings me back to my news directing days where I can pick who's on the screen and where they show up and I mean, I can, I can switch me and Rich right now back and forth. So like, all of those, all those customizations that you get that you don't get out of Zoom, this is really built for a clean presentation. It's been, it's built for the end user to see the optimal product of, this is what the meeting looks like and they have it together and they're organized. Um, we can customize the backgrounds, we can put graphics on. Um, we can pull comments on stage. Things like that. So it just, it really, it puts together a polished product is really what I'm trying to say and I think it, it's what we're going for and I think it's a good look for the school district to obviously have a polished product.
And Sean, going forward, you know, eventually we'll be in real-time location and everything like that. Does StreamYard offer us the opportunity to do both? Which is as long as, for example, I have, or whoever the chair is, has a computer next to them and can review the, the questions that come up in the chat and answer the, the piece, is that um, is that, can that work with um, with a real live meeting, with people can attend that too?
Yeah, absolutely. So we could definitely do this in person. Uh, what we would do is we would take our primary video uh, output out of a switcher or wherever we're doing the production. We'd put that as a single feed in the StreamYard. So most of what you would be seeing would be a full screen, like you're watching, uh, you probably, you wouldn't have these individual squares of each person sitting in the auditorium um, or in the black box or wherever we held the school committee meeting. Um, you would, you would see a finished product, like you're watching a live YouTube video, like a live presentation. Uh, but it would still allow for those comments and questions to come in through social media and through YouTube. And it allows for that dialogue to happen back and forth. And what we would do is we would just have the school committee member, uh, the school committee chair or maybe multiple members. Uh, we'd just log in and sit backstage. And when you're sitting backstage, it allows you to see all those comments that are coming in across all the platforms. Uh, you don't have to monitor one Facebook page thinking that you're missing something on a YouTube channel. It pulls all of those comments together from all the pages and puts them in one stream for us and allows us to answer all the questions at once.
Um, just, just to be clear, somebody, Nate Demarest put up there and it it is a point. Uh, his biggest gripe is that through this particular platform, the general public can ask questions or comment. But can't uh, rebuttal a response to their question or comment in a timely manner. You know, I would add to that Nate too, that there is an opportunity, it, the comments don't end. Um, you know, when somebody makes a comment, um, and then other people are answering, it's, the chair has to give them the floor back in order to answer. So I, I still think the comment piece is still there for people to put what they want. Um, I get it's different and I, I fundamentally get that, but I, I just want to point that out. So Theresa, you have your hand up, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just as a member of the Subcommittee for Community Engagement, I, I feel you know, a lot of us have spent this last year really trying to engage the public um, in every possible way we could and truly this platform has brought us so much more engagement. And I just, I, I feel like the benefits outweigh the, the, the bad really because you're getting, Sean, the metric speech for themselves as someone posted in the chats. What you pull just from one avenue of Facebook proves the point that we are engaging this community and that is the goal, the ultimate goal and while we are our own board and other boards may do a different thing, that is their prerogative. We're looking at three thousand students and families and our job is to engage as many of those families as possible. So for me, this is the best avenue to do that while we're in this situation we're in and to know that once we do go live, we could continue that platform and allow people to stream in, I think is fantastic. So I, I would be all for increasing our um, membership to StreamYard.
Um, somebody, I, Greg, before I go to you, I just wanted, somebody asked a question, could we, could we, could you add someone to monitor live chat during the meetings? And just so everyone understands, Sean really does that while directing the meeting. Or um, Melanie, when Melanie's directing the meeting, we sort of, um, there's a comment section that we can see everybody's comment. Um, and we try to review that all together to make sure that was missed. But the piece could be assigned someone and the short answer is no. Because when a meeting's running, it's the chair's responsibility to, to handle the meeting. So I view it as making sure, you know, Sean will usually send me a note to remind me that I missed a question or somebody missed a question. Everybody's been really good about making sure. A lot of times you'll see me, I'm over here because I'm writing down uh, people's questions. If I see other people are um, are writing questions, I'm gonna get to them. Um, obviously I try to group questions together. You'll have people who will ask multiply the same question a couple of times and sort of group them together and split them up if I need to. Uh, Greg, go right ahead. You had a question. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I want to applaud our committee for keeping an eye. I'm just quickly give a thumbs up if you've have your comment section open right now and you're looking at it. Like when we're in these meetings, we're constantly watching this and and we, we do apologize if we miss anything. I remember I, I looking at those stats that Sean wonderfully composed for us, when we were um, when we had the four thousand views at once as we're reopening school, they were, it was scrolling because people were answering to themselves. It, it, imagine a Facebook thing where everyone's replying every thirty seconds and see the question at the top, two minutes later it's gone. And I remember Sean scrambling, trying to find every possible question he could and put it on the screen and put it out there. And, and I think, you know, as a parent who, this is bedtime and this is family time, it's, it's easy to kind of see those comments, it's easy to follow on Facebook. You can follow it on your phone and not have to watch it on cable. I can't tell you how many people I know cut cable during the pandemic. Um, so it's an absolutely fantastic feature. And if this allows it, um, and my question for Sean is this. You guys have been working understaffed. When we were meeting in the Nichols Auditorium, you had a whole slew of kids working with you and Adam throughout this thing. When you guys go live again, will you be able to have students that can take more control, let's say, for the comments and and help put them on the screen and kind of keep an eye on that while you direct it? Is, is you guys are working with a skeleton crew right now making this production and it's fantastic. So
I think, I think there's definitely, there's definitely room to grow. Um, we always look at how we can implement students, student participation and things like this. I mean, we used to have a soundboard operator, right? That was at every meeting and we had a couple of students that were really into it and they knew everything that was going on at school committee because they were the soundboard people for the the soundboard operators for the meetings and they loved it. But there's definitely ways to get more kids involved. Uh, when you, when you see the videos that we're gonna be putting out of that, that TV studio in the new building, um, it's pretty incredible. The amount of, the way we built the studio was we can, if I need to direct a production by myself, I have that ability to do it. I have my audio here. I have my camera controllers right in my board, I can pull all my graphics in pre uh, pre-done. Um, I can do it by myself, but I can also have a kid direct, I can be behind them, giving them assistance. I can have a kid behind me over here moving the cameras, I can have another kid behind me doing replay, can have another kid over there running the teleprompter in the studio. I can have three kids outside in the stadium. Um, on running cameras. So it's, the, the scalability of the studio and also this platform is I mean, really the limits are endless. Uh, there's actually a StreamYard uh, like webinar chat release thing coming up in the middle of April. Um, and I'm excited to kind of see what they're gonna release, but we've been, there's a kind of a forum where you can submit questions and submit recommendations and one of the things was more than ten people in the room. Um, and I'm sure that was already on their agenda, but two weeks after that, they responded to everyone. They're like, we're happy to announce that with the professional plan, you can now have twelve. So it's, it's things like that and I'm sure they're gonna grow and I'm sure they're gonna have, they've really killed it when we they've really killed it when we've, when we've moved to StreamYard and they've gone through and they've done upgrades. And I'm sure it's only going to get better as, as they move forward.
And I, I just want to add too, in the entire year we've been doing this, I, I haven't heard from anybody who's had an issue with the way we run it. In fact, the biggest question I get, and I'm sure you all get at the same time is, when you go back to live in person, can you continue on Facebook? Can you continue on YouTube? And I've always said that we were going to look at that. So, you know, we did get a complaint. So I think it's important that we address it and, and, and have this part of it, like I said, and have a conversation about it to see which way we want to move forward. It's our meeting. It falls under how we want to do it. All these pieces are in compliance with the open meeting law. And so Rich, I know you had a question, but I just wanted to address those pieces.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You, I had two questions. Now I only have one because my first question was, is the way that we're doing it complying with the open meeting law? And I'm glad to hear that it is. I think, I think I'm hearing from everyone on the school committee. I mean, I'm just so happy with the, the level of involvement of the community. And I can't imagine going through something like this with, you know, closing the, you know, closing the schools and then going through reopening and all the, you know, the craziness without having this level of community involvement. And so I think I, I would never be in favor of curtailing what we're doing right now. And I'm glad to hear Sean Siciliano talking about the, you know, there's room to grow in the future. And so the, the question I had really, I guess, was just addressing the, the question I saw in chat, which is again, just a proof of how awesome this platform is that we see this question and we can address it. And so Mr. Demers had, had mentioned about the back and forth. And, and my question, and, and I mentioned this to you through, in a different conversation, Mr. Chair. But I think what the public doesn't know is that we're not allowed to deliberate things outside of these meetings. So really, when you're hearing stuff here, it's the first time that we as a committee have, have discussed things. And it's not real obvious until you're on like a committee or a board that, that that's the way it works. But I'm glad it does because the public gets to see how we feel. But anyway, my question was really, is there a way that we could, you know, like take phone calls or something? And I know just by suggesting that, I'm suggesting that that means we have to have someone manning a phone or something. But to allow for the back and forth without necessarily having to figure out how to invite people into StreamYard on the fly. Is something like that possible?
I, we could. It would, I'd have to look into if there's a technical way to do it. The way that I would see doing it is just setting another, taking another spot away from the participants and using that, using that line as one specific person that could, that would be, that would be backstage. And then being able to just take that and take that call in. We, we kind of get back into the security side of it where what happens if someone calls and I say that I'm Sean Siciliano and people know that I'm Sean Siciliano, but turns out I'm not Sean Siciliano, but I had the phone number and I can say anything I want. And now I'm on YouTube, I'm on Facebook, I'm on all the Facebook pages, I'm on cable TV. And right there, now we have to go, we have to edit every single video that we put up. And that's, that's one of the big things that as the, as the, one of our people for the district is that I see as a potential risk. I like the comments. I like the comments. I like that discussion. And one of the big things about StreamYard and about this participation is it allows, it allows us to tell our story. And I say that to Melanie all the time, that I want to be the ones telling our story. I want middle rural public schools to be telling our story instead of people in the community telling our story for us. I want it to come from us. And sometimes it becomes he said, she said. But when it's, when we have a meeting like this and we host it like this and the community can all see it happen live and they can all participate in and all have that discussion. It really allows us to tell our story and get, get that information out there. And it's immediate. We've, we've done releases to families right after meetings have happened. And I think that's really crucial that the meeting ended at eight thirty and at eight forty-five, we have a message going out to families that says, this is the decision that was made. This is why it was made. And moving forward, please reach out if there's any more problems. And I think we also need to, Mr. Chair, can I talk about just general price of StreamYard? So the general price of StreamYard for this subscription that we have now is in the ballpark of two hundred and forty dollars a year. The premium subscription that we're looking for is five hundred dollars a year, five hundred and seventy dollars a year. So we're not talking about thousands of dollars to upgrade this platform. It's a really affordable platform. I think that's why they've been so successful. I have other towns reaching out to me saying, how do you do your meetings? And we're on Facebook groups across the nation. And people are like, how do you do your meetings? We do Zoom, we do this. And StreamYards become huge because people are like, oh, we use StreamYard. And someone would be like, oh, how much is it? It's like, oh, it's three hundred bucks. They're like, oh, perfect. And even if, if we started our own Zoom account, I don't even know what that would cost to be able to have multiple participants in. And what, where do you set that limit? Do we use the towns? Do we have to have someone from the town do that? Do we purchase our own? What does that cost? So I really think StreamYard is the optimal program now and I would love to get the board support to move forward with.
Just, I want to go over two things that, again, to address. As far as the back and forth, I think what's important is in thinking about that, we've seen people ask questions. And I've, I've sort of read their question or other people have read their question. And then they'll immediately respond, that's not what I meant. I meant this. So I think there is some back and forth in the comment section. I, I get the fact that it's not like other platforms. I want to lay that out. The other thing I want to say is, going forward, you know, I think we all hope at some time we're meeting in person. So there's two opportunities here, if you will. There's the opportunity to come to a meeting to stand up, ask a question if you want to, or there's an opportunity to just ask your question online and get an answer. I don't view either as I would weigh one over the other, right? Because they're all questions from people. So I want to make sure they're answered equally. So we're gonna, we're gonna deal with them. So I, I think that's the point. And then the other thing too is, you know, we've had people make comments that weren't necessarily questions. We've read them and sort of asked the superintendent or whoever to address them because it made sense at the time. So Meg, I apologize, but I know you had your hand up. So go right ahead.
You just stole what I was going to say. When you're in a, a meeting in an auditorium somewhere and you just want, you just have a comment, you're, most people aren't just going to get up and go to the mic and make that comment. They're going to make the comment to someone they're sitting next to or they're going to go home, make their comment. And that's kind of where that dies. And so if there's some misinterpretation there, then we can solve that right then and there. So I think that speaks to the point a little bit. And then, like you just said, we're reading those comments out loud. So that was going to be my comment.
Mr. Chair, if I could add one thing.
Sure, go ahead.
So the, I, I specifically remembered it was one of the, one of the hot meetings where we were talking about a lot of things and a lot of comments were coming on. And we know that everything isn't instant. So what I'm saying now, people on YouTube are going to see twenty-three seconds later or twenty-five seconds later. And the comments were rolling in and questions were rolling in and then they stopped. And we were like, okay, we're going to adjourn the meeting. And we adjourned the meeting. And right as we adjourned the meeting, a comment came in and it was another question. But you had that ability to go back and just add that answer right in after. And people can do it right from their house. And I think that's the biggest thing. We had a email come into the questions email earlier this week that I sent to, to Chairman Young that was in support of this platform and was in support of being able to stay at home with their children. It's bedtime. They can do that normal routine. They can hit pause on YouTube or hit pause on Facebook, put the kids to bed and then come back. And I think that's one of the, one of the things that our, our viewers really enjoy and our families really enjoy. And we're, we're a business and we're, we're in it and our customers are our students and our families. And I think that they're happy with what we're doing. And I think it's a great platform.
And you know, and again, I, I want to emphasize that I, I think as we have this discussion, we had this discussion because we had our first complaint. And that was, that was reasonable. I don't have a problem with it. I don't, I don't have a problem hearing from complaints from people, as we said. So it's that opportunity to discuss it and see how we want to change. Again, we're, we're supposed to comply with the open meeting law and, and we have. The public comment is not part of the open meeting law. As a matter of fact, in the open meeting law, it specifically goes out of its way to say, public comment has nothing to do with open meeting law. But that doesn't mean we want to ignore public comment. We want to do it in a way that we give people opportunities to interact. We give people opportunities to say what they want to say. Now, again, I can't emphasize enough, it's different and it's okay. But by the same token, other boards aren't on Facebook, aren't on YouTube. And again, like Sean says, that, that's where our parents go. That's where a lot of people go. So we're trying to bring it out to where they are and to make sure they're engaged. Clearly, the numbers that Sean showed us tonight show we're engaging. I mean, I, I said this to everybody at some point because it always makes me laugh. When I started on the committee, the committee had what was the Mass Association of School Committees' general practice, that there was a public comment section and that was it. And that no one was allowed to talk about, to any business that was before the committee, except committee members. That has never made sense to me and that's why we, we made sure and we changed and I convinced the committee and talked to them about it and they understood what I was saying. That it makes, it doesn't make sense that the six school committee members and the business manager and the superintendent are the only ones who can come up with good ideas. So it makes sense for, to give people opportunity to talk about each and every piece of business that we do because it affects their children's lives. And so we've always, you know, since I became chair that day, we opened up the entire meeting to everybody to be able to comment. The thing that cracks me up is there has been plenty of times when we will, before we take a vote, I will turn to the audience and you guys have seen me and I will say, is there anyone here who wishes to make a comment? And I will chuckle because we are the only people sitting at those desks. And there is no one in the audience except one of the students who's working the soundboard. And sometimes I wish that the student would raise their hand so that I would get somebody to come up and talk. I have never felt more engaged by people than in this pandemic. Because people have time after time after time been able to talk to us, email us, send us notes and ask questions that they wanted to ask. And I really believe, because I think I've heard it this way and I'm sure you all have, that those questions were always out there. That, you know, people would pull me outside in the street and ask me a question and I try to answer them. And they say, I was watching the meeting. I came up with this question, but I wasn't at the meeting, so I couldn't answer the, ask the question. And they have the, the ability to get their questions answered. And that's, to me, what we're doing to engage people. I can't emphasize enough, I get it's a different way. But there's so many different ways that people are doing things that we're looking at things differently and that's all. So Greg, did you have a question?
Just, just through you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments to answer some questions like about the, the back and forth. I have a perfect example from the last meeting where it was about reopening schools and things like that. We had a presentation from the principals on their reopening plan and parents asked questions about why a teacher gets shifted. And in the meeting, those principals answered the questions. And then once the principal were off screen, another question came in and Superintendent Lynch was able to clarify more about why that teacher switched. And to me, that would be like a meeting where we had the principals in front of us, they gave the presentation. You ask for a comment and someone comes down. So that was more traditional. One thing that has been a major advantage, especially through COVID, with all these changes, everyone wants to know how it affects their kid. And every single parent's in a different spot, every single school's in a different spot. The administrators who spent the time answering all the minor questions like, is my specific kid going to change? Is my bus route going to change? Things that would take us hours to answer and keep this meeting ten hours long. The administrators are able to go in and specifically allow, you know, individualized answers, which was fantastic because we as a committee can't give those answers.
Sean, you had something to say? Go right ahead.
Yeah, just there was a couple of things in the chat that I, I haven't really looked at Zoom in a while. We're not a Zoom district anymore. We're Google. And it was Zoom for a large meeting to support up to a thousand participants. Starts at six hundred dollars a year and then went on to say a thousand attendees. It's thirty-four hundred dollars a year. StreamYard is an amazing deal. And we're not talking about just using StreamYard for school committee meetings. We've used StreamYard for everything. We've used StreamYard for graduation events last year. We were going to have the, I think it was financial aid night, not financial aid night, scholarship night. Was it, was it scholarship night or I think it was scholarship night. It was to be outside and there was a thunderstorm. We switched everything. We did it inside and we did it on StreamYard. We're talking about math, math info nights, reading info nights. The orientation for kindergarten, the orientation for HBB, MKG, NMS, MHS. All of those things are all being hosted on this platform right now. And as much as it's because out of necessity where we can't put three hundred parents in the cafeteria or in the auditorium for an event, it's, I think it's going to become something that sticks. It's, it's such a convenience factor for people to be able to stay home, get the same information. And they're more likely to ask questions in the chat than they are to stand up at the event and ask the question. I, I just don't see it going anywhere and I think starting here is, is a great start.
Good. Rich, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, just want to repeat that the level of community involvement with this platform is unprecedented, I think, for, for our meetings for sure. And the only question that I have really is just thinking about those groups that may not either have a Facebook or want to comment on Facebook or have a YouTube or want to comment on YouTube. I mean, we do have that inbox and my question really is in regards to, to kind of like real time, like email submissions. And that sounds like it's a huge pain, but I just wanted to check with, with you, Mr. Chair and with Mr. Siciliano, that if someone did submit an email question like during a meeting, do we have the ability or the capacity to respond to those the same way that we do with, you know, questions submitted in chat?
It's on our screen right here.
All right, thank you.
So a, as much as it's, we use it for, for school committee, for a spot for people to reach out. It's also becoming an email address that people know that someone's going to look at. And it's, it's convenient. They know it's questions. They have a question, whether it's a question for a principal or a question for, for, that I can answer, that the superintendent needs to answer, that we're looking for, for the school, the school committee. It's become that kind of one spot and I have, I can monitor it. Dr. Gates can monitor it. And we just kind of divvy up the emails. We know where they should go. We forward it to, to the principal at the middle school or forward it to the chairman of the school committee or it's, sometimes it's a question that I can answer myself. And they go, not only do they go to that account, they get forwarded to my school email, which I then see and sometimes I just reply from my school email because it's faster. But it's definitely a place people can go and we hope that if they have questions, that that's where they're going to get their questions answered. I know the Facebook pages, the parents of Nichols Middle School are helpful. But sometimes they, you need that administrator to answer that question or you need that school employee. And the questions email is a great place for families to go to kind of get that question if they're looking for something in the immediate sense.
And I, and I would also add, Rich, too, that, you know, Sean sends any appropriate questions to me to look at. We, we make them part of the meeting. The other thing is, all of you have gotten emails from somebody who have asked a question. We've made sure it was included and was asked or was part of the presentation. So if we knew it beforehand, we could let, I can think of, for example, you know, when we had the, when they had the presentation at last meetings about openings. There were lots of opening questions that we had, right? That weren't all settled and done prior to that. And so we sent, I sent those questions to the principals. They all added them as part of their, their presentations. They were clearly, you know, like what would the lunchroom look like? What would the cafeteria look like? Those type of things. And they answered all those questions. And so those pieces are, have always been out there for people to take a look at. In addition to our emails are online too. So if people had, I know in the past that what usually happened for a meeting was somebody would email me or email members of the committee and they'd send them to me and we'd make sure they were included.
And we also have, we talked about accessibility as a public school district. And all these videos, once they're done, they go on YouTube and then they're automatically translated through closed captioning. So no matter what language you need to view the meeting in, it takes that dialogue and puts it into closed captioning. And it can put it in. I don't even know how many languages are on there. There's a bunch that are on there for our families that maybe of our L students.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, just a quick follow up and it's more of just a statement, just to wrap up what I was questioning about. It sounds like if you don't want Facebook or don't want YouTube, you still have access to the email address. And so in a way, I think we kind of covered our bases in terms of receiving questions. And my major concern We kind of covered our bases um, in terms of receiving questions and um, my major concern was the back and forth and and I think. I hadn't thought of it the way you thought of it, um, to be honest. And and now I I get it. That if someone asks a question earlier in the meeting and we respond to it and they comment again and say, well, you didn't quite get, you know, what I said. And then we respond to that and. Um, that, I mean, like you said, it's different, but it is in a, in a lot of ways the same. Right. Anyway, thank you.
No, so uh, the, the pieces that I want to add to everybody is this, is that. If a platform makes sense and can host other, we can put it on other platforms and do things and allow. People to call in and dialogue, I would say to use that, but I don't see that platform as existing currently in the form we want. And I would also say that the back and forth, the. Being there in conversation is going to happen when we reopen too. So, you know, we can run this way. And in the in-person at the same time, so it's going to help. So if that makes sense to everybody. Um. I I want to be clear, so I'm going to ask the committee. Does any of the, any member of the committee wish to make a motion to change? The platform we are currently using. Um, and I ask it that way because we are currently in a platform. If somebody wanted to make a motion, we could discuss that and move on. But since I hear from no one, we will keep the platform as currently. Um, then in that case, the chair would ask for a motion. Well, I don't think we need to ask for a motion. We're going to expand this platform. As we've said, because it makes sense for our district and. And go from there. We're going to expand the StreamYard to the next level so that we can add other events and and put it on different. Uh, pages and do different things. Um, you know, and go from there. So I just wanted to clarify that piece. Okay. Any further questions about that before I move on from this piece? And Rich, go right ahead.
Sorry, not a question. Just a thank you to Sean and to to everyone that that manages this. Um, because like everyone said, we went from, you know, maybe one question every other month in person to hundreds. So um, I think it's, it's been awesome for us.
No, and I would ask everybody to please keep your questions coming and you, you know, and. We'll deal with them and go from there because it's about your children, so we want to make sure your questions are answered. Um, so with that, um, the next item on my agenda is we have one action item. It's to appoint. The superintendent to the Reed's Collaborative Board of Directors. This is an annual appointment we do. Um, can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Again, this is an annual, is annual appointment to the Board of Directors. Um, hearing then, uh, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Ms. Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Rowe.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Does anyone have anything else they wish to bring up before I adjourn this meeting? Seeing, oh, Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Go vote. Eight AM to eight PM this Saturday. That's it. Thank you.
Um, and with that, before we take the, the motion to adjourn, the chair will say again, thank you to Mr. Rowe for your years of service. Um, and we appreciate everything you've done um, and look forward to working with you as a private citizen parent. And not as a member of the committee and I hope you enjoy yourself.
Thank you all. Thank you, Metabar.
So with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. So. Sorry, a second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Oakley.
Aye.
Ms. Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Rowe.
Aye.
Ms. Janess.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.